I'm happy I want to do this.
Can I call me in order, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Eastick?
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Can I have a motion for approval of the last one?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Value-added discussion? None?
We're good.
Jen, roll please.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick? Mr. Jennings?
Yes. All right, Jennifer, your treasurer's report.
Um, as usual, the bills accounts payable as well as the board reports. And we do have some donations that I will read. Um, Mr. Supple donated a bunch of waiver equipment. And all of these are to the Ed Smith Memorial Scholarship. We had twenty dollars from Ryan Klappzettel, ten dollars from Marsha Duker, twenty dollars from Heidi George, ten dollars from Debbie Baer, twenty dollars from Sandy and Jay Whitmer, ten dollars from Gretchen Hall, twenty dollars from Pat Troy, ten dollars from Marilyn Hettison, a hundred dollars from Charles Ardenfield, thirty-five dollars from Cleon Smith, and a hundred dollars from Randy and Lily Kennedy. And as part of the financial items, it's time to do the October five-year forecast, which is attached. And we have to do one amendment to our rates and resolutions for fiscal year fourteen. We're moving, um, 1.5 mils out of the debt service and reallocating it to general fund and EIA. And the NHS activity budget is attached.
Any...
That's all those emails that we were discussing on this, right? Moving...
Yeah.
Do I have a, I guess, a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Motion. Second.
Now for some good questions or discussion? Jen, on the five-year forecast, same rule of thumbs in terms of how you're projecting increases and ins and outs for open enrollment? Or did the... I guess, did you apply the same rule of thumb, I think, to the...
Yeah, right now, our enrollment's down. So, we expect the projected revenue that the state says we're gonna get to drop a little when Cheryl submits the October four information to the state. As of right now, um, it does look like our enrollment is down and our open enrollment is up a little. So, we did project a little bit higher for open enrollment costs, expenses, and then with the revenue, you know, projecting it down a little.
We graduated a bigger class.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Is the open enrollment larger than last year?
A little bit.
So, we're growing in the open enrollment numbers now?
Um, Cheryl would probably have to fill that question for you.
I just did a count today and it was 123 to 103.
Okay.
One twenty-three out, one twenty-one.
Yeah, going in the right direction.
So, that's not too bad.
I want to say, uh...
123 out, 103 in.
Okay.
But we're still up.
Yeah, the gap's closing. Well, that's, that's the goal.
Uh, besides... In nine-ten, it was thirty-eight gap.
Yes.
I mean, we've slowed it down.
We're slowing it down.
So, we're narrowing the gap, which has always been our goal. Uh, besides that, I know, like, in the last two years, I mean, with Kasich and everything, things starting to calm down and, you know, I mean, every district in the state has had the problems with them changing the funding, you know. Are we, are we to a normal pace now where we think...
Well, our first foundation payment in October was the new funding formula. So, we should have a better idea of what we're gonna get now. Like I said, though, um, with the, the numbers are down a little. So, we, I had to project our funding down a little because when she reports the number of students, our funding is gonna go down a little bit. But we, we kind of have a better idea now of what we're gonna have in revenue for the year.
First taste of the new system, you like it as much as the last one?
Well, I don't think they've got all the pieces there yet. There's some, there's still some things missing when I was in there looking around on ODE. So, I'm hoping with our next payment, which is tomorrow, they'll have some more information for me. It, it's more of, like, the attachments that they give you, so...
Okay.
But it's, it's a little different than the last funding formula we had, so...
So, just, I don't think anyone out there sees these numbers. But according to the five-year forecast, first year's flat in terms of revenue and expense. Second year is virtually flat, revenue versus expense. And then the third year's 450,000 more expense than revenue. Fourth year is 780,000 more expense than revenue. And the fifth year is almost 900,000 more expense than revenue. So, it takes our current cash position of a million dollars in our cash flow right now to a negative one million balance at that fifth year. So, is that... It's, in other words, it's a concern because we've turned the ship here pretty well the last three, four years. And now we're starting to see numbers again that we didn't want to see, but we're seeing them again.
Well, what's built into that is a lot, our purchase services are, are biggest increases every year, mostly due to special education, so...
But those are required.
Those are required. But, but that's the biggest, one of the biggest expenses that's built into the forecast. And of course, salaries and benefits always increase every year. So, that's another expense that's built into the forecast. Now, the, the thing with the revenue is, we know what we're gonna get for fourteen and fifteen, but we don't know what we're gonna get for sixteen and beyond. So, it's very hard to project the revenue. So, that's one piece of the puzzle that's very tough to, to do.
The new system, is it gonna be as dramatic on the numbers actually in the seed? Or is it, are they changing the formula more? Because, I mean, a lot of districts, even in our own county, are shrinking the numbers. You know, and the population of Ohio is shifting and migrating in different areas. The new formula that we're seeing for the first time now...
Well, that, it's a combination of the number of students, but they also took into account property values and wealth of the district, too.
So, property values go down, are you penalized, you think, for that? Are you, is it more positive where they try to help rural areas?
Well, the state is supposed to try to make up for some of that, so... It, I, and I haven't had a chance to actually sit down and look at every single piece up because it's, it's a very complicated formula. You're more than one week, you've got it, you can find it on ODE's website. But, um, it's...
Some homework to do, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's very, it, it's a pretty extravagant formula.
I think we're keeping our fingers crossed, hoping that this one was gonna maybe even help out some districts like us even more than before. Just too soon, too soon to tell, though, probably.
It is a little because there's some things that, um, I budgeted for this year in the forecast that may or may not happen.
Yeah.
So, it's a little early in the year. By the May forecast, that will, I mean, that, the year will pretty much be almost over. So, we'll be able to tell where we're at in better position.
Now, I do want to point out also, though, it's not that the expenses are going out of control versus the revenue coming in, but we no longer have the lump sum dividends that we've received in the last two or three years. Large 300, 400, 500,000-dollar one-time events.
Yeah.
They go out of our income and now we're back to a steady state, which now...
But we'd love to have another three or four hundred.
Well... If there's anyone... No, I just, I just wanted to make that point, that it's, now we're back to a steady state income flow and it's not enough to meet our steady state expenses, so... All right, any other questions? Larry wanted to, signed up to speak after we were...
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, sure.
A couple of things. Jen, I know that you didn't forecast any retirements for the current year. You have that in there. Do you do anything in year two, year three, year four? Do you try to forecast retirements?
I do. I only have two for...
Okay, so you have something in there for that?
Yes.
Okay. The 180,000 lease?
Yes.
I didn't quite understand that. Is that one year, is that every year?
That's one year.
That's a one-year time, so that's hitting the books one time.
Yeah.
And there's one, there's one other account on there, Jen, that I didn't understand. It was the, and maybe it was just what Mike was talking about, the, the one-time or Kirk. The 250 or 260, it was something to do with the Ohio Jobs Reduction Act?
Oh, that was the ed jobs that came down from the federal government. It was a one-time grant that we used over, you were allowed to use it for one year or two years. We used it over two years.
Okay. So, that was in our revenue?
Yes.
Over the last couple of years and it probably contributed to our million-dollar...
Balance.
Yes.
Balance, okay. That's good, that's all I wanted to know, thanks.
All the TARP funds, everything that, the stimulus funds helped.
Okay, thank you.
Well, in eleven, there was 360,000 and then twelve, there's 200,000.
The 360,000 was the SFSF.
Okay.
And then when the SFSF went away, then there was the ed jobs, which was the combination of the 202 and then the 37,560.
So, it's roughly 600,000 dollars.
Well, in 2010, there was a chunk.
And there was, yeah, there was, there was more in 2010, but the forecast doesn't have 2010 in it.
I think that was the biggest year, I thought.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
Anyway, any other questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
That was the only public question, unless anyone else could want to impromptu? You're on.
Thank you. No, I mean, you guys have asked me to come back for an update on the situation with Olivia. I've talked to Mr. Ridgway and talked to Mr. Minow several times concerning everything. The technology, it seems we're somewhat hitting a brick wall, if I understand right, where the technology end of things are. And I know he's put a call into the county, I've put a call into the county, to try to hopefully bridge that gap and get the technology. I know it's out there. Whether it's compatible or not, I don't know.
The gap is, and, uh, I'm gonna have to, you know, this, because I'm not a computer savvy person. Uh, and we're talking, uh, I know, I have not talked to Rep. Ledercounty, but Ryan has. And, um, to put, they can only, we can only scan in and just read only. What we're trying to do is scan it in so that the paper says you type it in.
Is that...
Correct.
And we can interact with it once it's in there.
And...
That's the brick, that's the brick wall we're hitting. Because if we can scan things in and her actually interact with them on the computer versus read-only is not doing us any good.
Well, you, so you could scan, because I know at home I have a scanner, so you could scan it, you could get it in there, but there's no, there's no software to interact with the scanned product.
To write over on top of it?
And I know we go to work, I know the technology's out there. It's just whether it's compatible or whether it can be done on the system here, I have no idea.
But Ryan doesn't know what would break that.
And we talked again this week about the PDF. My understanding would be, the teachers use a lot of sheets from workbooks and stuff. They would have to generate that themselves, type it all over again to be a PDF file, to be able to interact with it.
Can you explain, explain what the interaction is to mean?
That, let's say there's a math sheet with 20 problems.
Right, so then you want the answer and work under it?
Right, she can type it into there, into the file, and that's...
Because when she was in...
We even called a book company to see, do you have something that we, we was gonna do that today? Do you have something that you can send us from your workbooks online that they, that could be a PDF file that can be edited? And that's...
And then when she did the, the classwork online, now I believe it was, and somebody can, no, no. I believe it was Jackson County we went through online.
Jefferson County.
Jefferson County, okay. When she was in chemo at the hospital.
Right.
And I mean, we did everything online. It was nothing to go into the tests online, to go into the workbooks online. So, I would assume somewhere there has to be some type of version that they have out there. Now, whether it's the same thing we're using or not, I don't know. But...
But even Microsoft Paint, you can have a PDF image and you can paint over it with a, with a cursor. So, if you had the PDF image of the worksheet of math, whatever, you should be able to scribble and scroll and draw and paint over it, the answer.
There's, there's a, um... Does she have an iPad?
She does.
There's a couple of programs that I know my wife uses to sign orders. It's called Sign and Send. And it lets you do that. It will let you read a PDF file and scribble over top of it. You can erase it, you can go back and do it. It's, it might be five bucks. It's, I don't know how, I haven't used it in a while. Myself, once in a while, if I have to sign a bank document and I'm not in town, I can do it on my phone. But it works pretty well. You can also take and save a image, like, if you want to save an image of your signature, then you can just copy and paste it on to that.
Right, I mean, we do all that at work. That's why, that's why I said there, there's a brick wall somewhere and we can get past it. It's just I don't know how to do that at this point.
But they can go into a PDF file, I don't see why she can't do, she can't do that. But I mean, that would be... Older tech, I mean, yes, the editable PDF files by the book companies would be great if you can do that in the short term until they either do that, which I don't know if they would even do that at some point in time, I don't know why they wouldn't. But it might be a less temporary solution to a...
Who's running the lead on this, Ryan? Is Ryan running the lead? Can, can, Kurt has ideas, Tom has ideas.
We get ahold of Jefferson County, let's bombard them with emails. Jefferson County is, like I said, that's a...
System?
Oh, that's an online curriculum.
Yeah.
Well, he was telling me if I, that for them to be able to tape it, I don't know. If I have them to tape on it, then the teacher would have to retype all this onto it, something they could do it. You couldn't take a worksheet you've been using, let's say, for the last nine weeks, and put it on there and make it editable. And that's what I don't know, that's why Ryan's taking it.
You can't, you can't edit it, but you could sign, you could do off.
You don't need to edit it, you just need to draw.
You just need to draw, and that's all she needs to do.
And you're saying there's a PDF file like that?
I'm saying Microsoft Paint. Take any, any, paint, you can draw over on anything that you brought in. You can take your picture and draw a face that looks better than your face on paint.
That's all hard to do.
And, no, we should not try that. But that's, that's something that, as I said, we talked about today.
The techn, what we have here, from what I understand, from what they've come across, is if they create the file in there, then they can go back in and she can interact with it. If it's scanned in, they can't. So, that's, and like I said, I don't know if that's the software that we have here, that there's something different that needs to be done, I don't know. I don't know what exactly we have and don't have. That's something I'm not aware of. But, I mean, so we're still working on it because right now, the system is rough for her. Because the scribe is doing a lot. And that's, the scribe's not there to learn or to, you know, she is. And the more she does herself, the more she's gonna retain and learn. And that's basically what I'm aiming for. She needs to be able to do this stuff herself. And, and where it, she's in OT, she's doing OT every week to learn, to write with her left hand and do these things with her left hand. But that's gonna take time. And so, but we're, we're trying that avenue.
Well, that's, if there's a way to do it, and we'll meet again tomorrow with Ryan. And, and you can send me, if you guys have the paint and those things, and we can get started.
And can I touch on one other thing? And I brought this up today. The issue with the bullying, I know the one incident was taken care of. Mr. Ridgway took care of that. There was another incident that happened, actually, it started at the football game and continued into school on Monday. And I just brought this to his attention yesterday because actually, Sierra brought this to her, one of the teacher's attention yesterday. So, there is still issues there. And, I mean, yes, kids are gonna be kids, but on the other hand, it definitely does need to be addressed somehow. And with that one boy, Mr. Ridgway more than handled that situation, from what I understand, and it has not reoccurred. But there is some ongoing situations with some other kids. And like I said, Mr. Bruggerly, am I correct?
I'll talk to him today.
Yeah. Sierra actually spoke to Mr. Bruggerly about that in defense of her sister, so... And now Mr. Ridgway's aware of the situation, but, and like I said, that, like, it was greatly taken care of the first time. He did a wonderful job, from what I understand, of taking care of that. And, but there are gonna be those situations that pop up because she, she is different and has to do things differently. So, but, I mean, I appreciate everything that is tried to be done. And anything I can do to try to bridge that gap or help with the technology end of things, I mean, I'll, I'll do. I just don't know what to do with this.
Thank you for your patience.
Electronic pen?
No.
They have them that you can do, I don't know if they're, they'll interface with, I think they interface with Word.
Let's give Brian our thoughts.
Yeah, here's email and...
They're pretty cheap, they're like forty, fifty bucks.
We'll have Brian work, so we're not gonna throw her into the, you can figure it out, though, so...
We'll work on this and, and, and Mr. Ridgway will be in touch with you.
You told her she has to spend forty-five dollars to try your ideas?
No.
I didn't say she had to, I'm just saying it's...
I mean, she has an iPad, she has a laptop at home. Her iPad, she actually bent. It needs to go back to the iPad store right now because she, where the volume is, mm, yeah. Yes, we're not gonna speak to that right now, but yes. So, she, she does have those things and she can use those things if necessary. I just, I, I don't know what's gonna work with what she has here, basically.
I think we can break down this wall, too. Maybe the formula's gonna be there then for the rest of the years, it should be good. Now, why should we break through this?
Right, I mean, it, because she is, it's gonna be an ongoing thing. This isn't something that's ever gonna change for her, so...
And thanks for your patience, like I said, and working with us, we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate it, but thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I don't want to jump in, but I bet Mike would have some thoughts, too. But if you want to send me a PDF, we have software at work that we can, I mean, it's PD, it's Adobe Writer. And Mike's a technology guy, I bet you he has a hundred ideas how to do that. I mean, I'd be glad to have, help, I'm sure Mike would be glad to help. But we do that at work all the time. I mean, and I'm sure Ryan, I mean, Ryan is, is great. So, maybe there's just some miscommunication, but I'm more than happy, if you send me something, I will at least tell you how we do it at work.
That'd be great. Because, yeah, because we talked today for quite, quite a while on that whole subject, even today. Still discussing it.
I bet Mike did give me, there were information for the gap stuff.
Right.
Yeah, like Larry said, if it's in a PDF, there's a number of ways to overlay answers or type or write text on top of it.
Sounds like Ryan was trying to edit it rather than just write it all down.
I bet you Ryan has not, I think you just gotta give him a chance.
Right. Yeah, I, it's funny, I was gonna call the company and say, do you, like, everyday math, do you have papers like this? So, thank you, we appreciate that.
All right, old business? That'll be yours. None?
No, old business, none.
Any student achievement?
Yes, I do. Brittany Simbetta, uh, won, uh, grand champion, um, in the showmanship at the fair. She also was the best for breed judging and showman of the showman at the Canfield Fair in September. So, we wanted to thank Brittany for that, or congratulate Brittany for that. The Lieutenant High School Soccer Team recently won their, its first varsity game and it was a 5-1 victory at Jackson Milton. And it was the first year that, in the OHSA competition. And they had a police escort, then the lieutenant helped celebrate their accomplishment. Saturday in Boardman, Grace Ayers will be running in the regional cross-country meet. She qualified at Malone College this past weekend and she, at the district, and she'll be in the regional meet this Saturday, I'm sorry, at Boardman. Being a, around a lot of athletic events, I've been to a lot of them. That district cross-country, Malone's one of the toughest, very hilly course.
How many miles?
Uh, was it 3.2? Yeah, 3.1, 3.2.
Five, five K.
Right, yeah, around there, yeah. So, that's a tough course, so congratulations to Brittany, the soccer team, and Grace.
All right, new business?
New business, okay. Uh, I'm gonna go A, 1, 2, and 3. Do we have a motion?
Take a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, the first one are the hours of the bus drivers calculated from the week of October 7th. Jerry Berlet, Amy Custer, Stephanie Daly, Jane and Don, as you can see. Uh, the second is maternity leave for Emily Rhodey. Uh, she'll be leaving around November 20th and returning March 6th. The third is to approve the following for office aides, a front door position. Jennifer Sharp and Melissa Hupp. We had what, Cheryl? We had 12 applicants, we interviewed all 12. And the, um... And we decided to go with AM and PM, if you remember, from the original proposal. The safety committee talked about several things, one was front door tests, that was Alice training. They're both on this agenda. So, this is a trial year with the union. And after this year, we reevaluate and see. This will be at an aid rate, which is 785 an hour, I believe, 784.
794.
794.
Quick question then, on the morning shift, is, we're even, doors are generally open to start the day.
Correct.
When does it lock down? Where she becomes the person that opens? After the class starts, or is it gonna be 7:30?
Well, 7:30, actually, Mr. Ridgway, your buses come in about eight, they come in the front door about 8:20. The doors are still open at that time.
Yeah, they come in...
They come in the side?
Buses, they, they get up at 8:30.
At 8:30, so that would be the final lockdown.
The side gets locked down with 7:40.
Downstairs, right, meet people?
Yeah.
Yeah, 7:45.
7:45. And then you lock down the other one at 8:30, then about 8:30, the whole school's all locked down?
Yeah.
And they'll book part of the panic button protocol training, training?
Correct. Who's monitor, how they, how they do, or? The high school principal.
The high school principal.
Any other questions? I think this is important because it's, I know you can't stop someone that's destined to get in here, but it's certainly a good first filter if someone's just wandering in, so... Roll call?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
C substitutes, uh, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion on that? Motion.
Motion.
Second. There you go. Any discussion on this?
Um, look. No. Substitutes for the year, as you can see, that's one of the things we always have problems with, whether it's teaching or cafeteria or with the office. So, it's good to have a good group of subs, a large number in there.
Roll call, please, Jen?
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Stain.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
The use of facilities, the LASSA to hold our fourth, fifth, sixth grade basketball tournament in our facilities, all four weekends in January of 2014.
Motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Question for you, Jen?
Yes.
We got in near trouble with our Coca-Cola vendor last year because LASSA had their own supply. But we have any agreement with the vendor allowing them to use their own, or what's the arrangement they need to have?
We must use Coke products.
Are they aware of that?
Yeah. Then do they not care if they buy the Coke products elsewhere?
You, it doesn't matter where you buy them from.
They just don't want a Pepsi product in the store?
Exactly.
I can understand. Hey, before we go any further, how did we work out the little glitches of the last couple of years as far as custodian? We all okay on that, they're paying for the custodian? We all okay on that, they're paying for the custodian?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they do.
So, they have these tournaments, absolutely cost the district zero. And we raised a lot of money for LASSA, which is the future of the Lieutenant sports programs.
But it does give us good free PR when they come and see us.
That's right.
The Paul Bulldogs. This is Ealing.
Just Ealing. Uh, can I have a roll call, please, Jen?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
This is operations, one through five. Motion, please?
Anyone with a motion?
Motion.
You second it? I second it, yeah. Any discussion on this?
Yes. Board policies, from the September board meeting. I also have the first reading of the attached, the attached policies for the O-PES. If you recall, we did the O-TES earlier in the year for the teacher evaluation system. We've been using the principal evaluation system as a pilot, and now it's to be the third year I've done it with our principals. The hospital 153 says you have to have the policy, it doesn't say, or has to have a procedure. It doesn't really say you have to have a policy. However, after we're comfortable putting it in the policy. So, I wanted to put that in there as we were going. As a matter of fact, it was, it was brought up at a meeting that I was at, and I looked, and we had not adopted a policy, and I just felt that a policy would be better than just a procedure. So, because right now, the policy states that it's a procedure agreed upon by the superintendent and so forth. I'd rather have it written about the O-TES. That's some history about that, and then that's all I have for that section.
On F5, approve the following agreement with MSB Consulting Group for the Medicaid billing. Is that because of the Ohio policy that just changed in the current events lately, or no?
No, what happens is that we do get reimbursement from the state of Ohio for Medicaid for some of the students that are being served under that. Unfortunately, we don't have the personnel to go out and get the Medicaid reimbursement ourselves. So, we use this company to go out and get the money for us, and then we pay them a percentage of the revenue we get.
Does the Medicaid, like, the numbers, do they fulfill what our billing number would be? I know a lot of doctors I know, Medicaid always tries to screw them over on the numbers. Does that happen on this level, too?
No, no, we don't have a problem.
Good, good, good.
Oh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley? Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Yeah, I'm not used to the student achievement report, sorry, but...
You can talk twice.
Right, you two, yes, I wasn't ready. Jennifer and I participated in the discussion this month, or week, last week. Joe Chivone, very interesting discussion, talked about lottery revenue as well as casino money, as well as unfunded mandates, like the third degree guarantee, and it was very, very interesting. I, like I said, fortunately, we've been ahead of the curve on a lot of these things, and with both of these issues. You know, as we point out with the five-year forecast, and I know that a lot of one-time money there, but, you know, as I can deposit feel, we have a, between 2008 and 2011, every year, well, the year before I even got here, but every year from 2003, my first three years here, we got a letter from the state right after the five-year forecast came out. Said you have a deficit looming, you need to tell me how you're going to cut the deficit. Then I'd have to come up with a plan to cut the deficit, and I haven't had to do that for the last several years. So, that's been, that's been nice, but during that time, we've also increased the opportunities for students. As I said before, we offer more classes at high school level. We have sophomores taking speech, we have military science, we have some online classes. Our girl last year took Latin. We have more students per, per district that go to seniors and sophomores than any other school. Now, last year, we were the highest, this year, we're a little bit lower, but we provide those opportunities for our students. We also have achieved, state achievement with statewide recognition, which, you know, I think that's something to be very proud of. You know, we're, we're able to work within those means and then offer those opportunities. So, we're very proud of that fact. And I, you know, and I know this sounds redundant, and it probably sounds like, boy, here he goes again. But, you know, it was pointed out during the last, last week's meeting, very insightful. It said, one of the people, one of the people in the audience, or one of the people in the discussion said, you know, it looks like it's going to be consolidation through starvation. That, you know, you're just going to wait till you go broke, and then you're going to have to go consolidate with somebody. And I know that we've been through those talks, you know, when I first got here, and probably before that, and probably generations before that. But, you know, I'm just grateful that that scenario isn't looming among us for a long time. And even though I know it's one-time money, and I know, you know, it's good to be in that position where you have to write those plans, and you look out and you see next year, carryovers a million, the year after that's nine hundred thousand. And I know that that, but, you know, sometimes you have to appreciate where you've come from, too, and where we're going. I do understand that there's a lot to do with that. And I know it sounds redundant, but I can't say it enough. How many of you say thanks, and I'm truly grateful to the, to those who made it possible, the staff. I say it every week, I can't say enough about the staff, and how much they do, and how much they care about the building and everything that they do, classified and certified. The, the community, the students, of course, the Board of Education, the community. I just thank you to everybody that, and I know it sounds redundant, you know, here we go, saying thank you again, but, you know, it's, it's good, it's good to, when you come to work, and I remember the, my first board meeting, I forget who said it, and said, because in my interview, they asked, how am I going to stay in Leitonia? And I said, because consolidation was a big topic, I said, I'll stay to the last, I'll, I'll fight to have that last chair carried out. And, and that's, that's how I feel, and I think that that's just, you know, we've come a long way. And I wanted to thank everybody, because there's been a lot of sacrifice, believe me. And it's just been a lot of sacrifice, and I don't think they know the appreciation that I have, I think the board has, and it's just very overwhelming. The district continues to implement Model of the Race to the Top initiatives during the final year of the grant. We're doing an in-service, a rave day tomorrow on learning standards, which means that the staff will be finishing curriculum maps from this, finishing, working on, looking ahead. We're not ready to finish them yet, I don't think. You may have some done in the elementary. We're still working on the SLOs with staff members. Some have formulated, submitted them, student learning objectives. And the lead mentor mentors and facilities have been attending training sessions at the ESC. So, we're still working on that. So, all facets of that grant are slowly being implemented to all the schools, and once again, we're ahead of the curve on that. We discussed parking lots, or parking lot lane up front. Now, the fire lane is on the side of the building, and the other side, sometimes the bus drivers coming up, as well as the emergency vehicles, I mentioned how tight it is when people park out front all the way down. We talked about that at meetings, I've done some work with Chief Soldano. We put some signs up there, and once again, as we move forward, we're going to start making some all calls and doing some things to make sure everybody's on board. The code, that the municipal code that the Village of Leitonia follows. And we've been working both with John and Dan Valentine as the constable. If an owner on private property, if a sign is posted against parking on the property or conditions or regulations under what parking is permitted, no person shall do the following. Park a vehicle on the property without the owner's consent, or to park a vehicle on the owner's, on the property in violation of any condition or regulation posted by the owner. Whoever violates this division or section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor. We don't want to give tickets, we don't want to go there, but we do see it as an issue, it's a problem. Most of the ADs I've talked to have really considered it an issue, a problem. So, we're going to get some all calls, get some warnings, but we may have come to the point where we may start ticketing there. And that's why we put the signs up, because the signs allow us to do that.
Can, in parallel to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Or before that?
Yes.
Could we evaluate the cost of even the gravel, hardpan, shoulder, berm, whatever, that would expand and allow people to park there? And more handicap spots, there's maybe four or five, three or four handicaps?
In the lane or in the front?
No, I'm saying, right now, we have the lane that's meant for parking, but only three or four more handicapped. But I'm talking the lane of grass where people do park on the shoulder and cause the congestion. Can we look at how much it would cost to carve out some of that sod, bring in some gravel, and hardpan it down so you can have some overflow parking, so they're not on the, on the drive?
Right, I see what you're saying. But we're talking also about the lane all the way down. Do you want to go all the way down with it?
Wherever you see parents parked, there's a place where they're going to park, just like you put a sidewalk where the grass is no longer grown, that's where you're going to...
We can do it by walk, figure out where the path is.
Right, I'm just trying to evaluate how much it would cost to, and maybe we can get donated gravel and whatever, but... It doesn't need to be blacktop, it can be just ax lac or whatever you want to call that.
Yeah, I can take a look at that.
Parking lot gravel, you have tons of that, you can rake some from your yard.
Yeah. Mine washes away with every night's hard rain.
Okay, I don't know, I just, I don't want to...
The problem, you don't want to...
The problem is the parking lot was not designed for where the front door is, so people have been naturally want to park there.
Well, it wasn't until one of our superintendents didn't want to leave the building, unless I revisit that.
Spill milk.
Yeah.
Like I said...
But, I mean, you're right, I mean, this is where you come in.
I would just evaluate how much it costs to add some legitimate parking there, rather than chase people away.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem. I'll get started on that. And that's all I have.
Oh, I interrupted you. Are you done?
I'm done.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion, Tom?
No.
Yeah, I sort of have a discussion. I just think, you know, I've been here for four years, and I've really listened to Jennifer and RB today talking about like the state of our district. And I think everyone in this room loves Leitonia, and, you know, the 83rd ranking in the state is so impressive. But, the last two years have been really, really incredible to be around here and coming up with these plans and these ideas and getting these chunks of money. And, you know, now we're getting a reputation for having a serious academic program. And, you know, the eyes are on us for the last year or two, from a lot of close districts right around here, how we did it. And I think whether it's, you know, it's us or whoever's on the board, you've got to stay positive with this district, and you've got to keep looking at it from every different angle, because there's grants out there. The four or five things we went through with the treasurer's report, talking about these groups of money, four years ago when I took office, they didn't exist. The only thing that existed was an eight million dollar deficit in five years. In two years, it was going to be a three million dollar deficit. Things come up, I know in the business world, it happens all the time. Sometimes opportunities present themselves at completely strange angles, and you don't know where they come from. The whole thing is being aware and in tune with yourself, or the district is, to seize it and to act on it. And I think you two, I mean, you're going to be primed for spotting that when it comes, when it appears, because it's going to appear again in the next four years, so there's got to be more opportunities. And if we're savvy enough that we don't miss the boat, you know, we all know that there was a, there was a big, in Youngstown, there was a big bid coming up, and they missed the grant deadline by a week. And we all, we all read in the vindicator over and over and over again, and it was just human error. I think it was three or four days, but the state didn't care, the government didn't care, they expected it. You know, sometimes punctuality and details and crossing Ts and dotting As matter, and having the vision to find these opportunities matter, and they're going to come around again. So, I mean, whoever's in control of this district, you just have to, you know, have humility, you know, put the, you know, the egos at the door. You know, when anything comes our way, we have to be all encompassing on every aspect, whether there's a mother that's concerned, or the sports program's in jeopardy, or we need, go online, or we're doing ladder programs, or, you know, we're finding grants, or there's gas money, or there's, you know, funds that are available, I mean, it's all encompassing. And I just, I just hope the district stays that way, looks into the horizon and just really sees. I mean, we're, we're in really good shape right now, and I mean, I know it's a little bit gray in the next five years, but if we really put our hats on, I think we could do it, I really do. I think there's going to be more opportunities, we just have to find them.
Okay, I'm taking my time back.
Did I motivate you?
The gentleman from Lexington.
Wow. Take it on the channel. Wow.
They're friends.
The one thing that I didn't realize how much, in, in business, I, I understand this, and I've been, our work right now has been very slow for a number of reasons. Government shutdown didn't have, it had a lot, it had a lot to do with it. But, the one thing about whatever you're involved in, it's dynamic, it's never going to stay the same. And one solution at one particular time in history, or in, in your operation, is not going to be the same as another, and you have to be able to adjust. And if you can't adjust, then you will fail. You'll overspend, you may not take opportunities when you can. But it's dynamic, and the decisions we make here may not be the best decisions in five years. That's a, that's a very humbling thing, because hindsight's always perfect. And everybody can say, well, we could have done better, but I think you can do it better. You just got to strive to do what's best. But I guess the lesson, the one thing I've learned is, it's going to change. And once you get comfortable with it, it's going to change more. I'm done.
Until after he goes.
Well, John still has some time.
Jennifer?
Richard, you good?
I will interject, we did have a, three of us were present at the library board meeting. We did have a positive constructive discussion, which will lead towards a policy on their end and perhaps something on our end. We need to work in cooperation, I think they're embracing the presence of soccer there, as long as it works within the insurance coverage and all of the scheduling and communication is upfront. And I think people have grown to like the facility there, and it saves us money from having to try to find facilities and build one here, so.
It seems like the library's always busy, I mean, it seems like there's always cars every time you go by.
Well, it makes sense, I mean, that's also a center of the community as well as the school, so. Anyway, my point was, it was a positive constructive meeting, I thought, so. At the end of a good finish to the first win at soccer, too, so, good time. With that, we are going to adjourn into executive session for personnel discussion, no action be taken. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion.
Oh, present will be the six of us. Yes, six. Second? Anyone, or all in favor?
Five.
Opposed?